Mr. Chair, I'd like to suspend the law for discussion.
All right.
For discussion of press closed session?
Right now, what we're going to do is move this presentation to after, to the new business. And we're going to move the closed session to before the presentation.
So you're going to turn the presentation into a new business discussion?
Correct.
Okay, just one moment.
With the closed session being moved up to right before it. Nobody has to leave. We'll leave and we'll come back.
So the closed session is going to be before public hearing, no?
No, after public comment.
Oh, public comment, okay.
Mr. Tony?
Yeah.
So we are going right now?
No, we have to do the public comment. So it has to be part of the new business. The way it's going to work is we're going to move on to the consent agenda, or excuse me, public comment, consent agenda, and then new business with the first thing of the new business being the closed session being moved up and then that discussion that's apparently right now.
We'll have to do one at a time, though we can't, I know that.
Sure, but he suspended the rules.
So we're going to suspend the rules. Councilman Hassan, Councilman Frye, suspend the rule. We're going to first move the presentation to new business A.
Yes.
So just give me one moment.
It is kinds of amendment, right?
One moment. And all in favor to move the presentation of the investigation to new business A?
Yes.
Thank you. And now I need to suspend the rules for moving the...
Motion now to move the closed session up.
Closed session up to...
I'll suspend the rule second.
Yeah.
Up to, one moment, where was it going to be placed? It's going to be after?
I guess that's A.
So it's going to be after public comment?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm sorry, who motioned?
I did.
And second? Okay, so I do have a question now. Usually at the amend the agenda, which this is amending the agenda, I still have to have them vote on approving the amended agenda.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, suspend rules to move closed session to after public comment. And all in favor?
Motion.
No, I already got some. All in favor, yes. And then now approving amended agenda.
I motion?
I'll second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do have one question.
All right.
I thought closed session would be additional deletion, isn't it? Before that.
We can still come back and suspend the rules to add anything?
Well, right now, it was already, we already had a closed session.
Yes, right now.
So we just move in it.
Yeah, we're just moving it.
We're just moving that, just moving one.
We just changed our order.
Okay.
Yeah, not additional or deletion, because we already have one.
But are we going to still have an addition deletion?
No.
No, there's no need to.
Okay.
All right. So the investigation report will be item, the first item in the new business and the closed session will be after public comment.
So we're moving into public comment, one moment?
Yes. So there's no additional deletions?
Correct.
Or?
You have to.
Yeah, unless there's another one. Okay. I guess there is no additional deletions and we move to the public council now.
Okay.
And now to a report detailing allegations against Hamtramck's top cop.
Findings in that report come from an independent investigation launched months ago.
The city reportedly paid hundreds of thousands of dollars to get to the bottom of a wide array of accusations against Chief Jamil Al Tahir. It comes after a memo from a city employee began circulating alleging the chief acted inappropriately on several occasions and may have even broken the law.
7 News Detroit's Randy Wimbley looking into those findings, listening to people about steps the city must take.
That investigation combed through more than a half million documents and included about 40 witness interviews. The investigation substantiated a number of allegations against a Hamtramck police chief and another Hamtramck cop.
Driving a city vehicle after drinking alcohol, pressuring officers to help in a custody dispute, and handing a loaded gun to a civilian volunteer and instructing them to put it to someone's head. Those are just a few of the allegations against Hamtramck Police Chief Jamil Al Tahir that Miller Johnson, a law firm the city hired to conduct an investigation, found to be true.
I would get fired if I worked like that at my job and did all these side deals and took people's safety, you know, lightly. I wouldn't have a job.
Residents like Tracy Pilcher and Mark Armond are stunned.
What do you want your mayor and your council to do in light of these findings?
Do what's right for the city. If somebody did all those things they're accused of, then they shouldn't be in charge of anybody.
The report was posted on the city's website and taken down soon after, but not before 7 News Detroit downloaded the damning document commissioned by city leaders to investigate allegations against Chief Al Tahir, Officer David Adamsik, and City Manager Max Garberino. All three are on administrative leave.
Max was just doing his job. He was a whistleblower and he came out and did his job and he shouldn't have been suspended.
The report found Adamsik, among other things, committed overtime abuse and violated policies regarding stolen property. As for Garberino, the investigation largely did not substantiate the initial allegations against him, but it did say he exercised poor judgment in his role as city manager, like delaying addressing allegations of misconduct by Chief Al Tahir and Adamsik. But Garberino tells me by phone he would have taken action sooner, but claims Mayor Amir Ghalib reportedly told him he had no authority to do so. We reached out to the mayor and every member of city council for comment. No takers. We also contacted Hamtramck's police chief and the attorney for Officer Adamsik, but we have not yet heard back.
The investigation's findings are set to be discussed at Tuesday's city council meeting. Stay tuned. In Hamtramck, I'm Randy Wimbley, 7 News Detroit.
Randy, thank you. I want to read the emails first. This is Talia Wu Fka. This letter is to solidify that Chief Al Tahir served as commanding officer to the 115 precinct and did a phenomenal job in serving our community. Chief Al Tahir has a unique way of serving the people. Jackson Heights is referring to, referred to as the melting pot of the world. Al Tahir brought people together in a very unique way. His policing skills proved to be fair and lowered crime stats. As an activist and former city council candidate, I can say we all deeply appreciate the warmth he brought to our community and our city. To see him go was a huge loss for our community, but a great gain for yours. I have known Chief Al Tahir for many years. He has proved himself to be an outstanding leader, not only in law enforcement, but in the community. As inspector to the most diverse community in the United States, zip code 11372, he lowered our crime stats and led his command with integrity. He implemented a skill set in which proved to be effective for all. Diversity is something Jamil has naturally. It's a gift to provide safety while uniting people of all creeds. Jamil's ethics are both outstanding and credible. NYC misses him intensely. I speak for my community as my voice. Your city is lucky to have a noble man lead. I humbly thank you in advance for reading my words and high hopes they will be read out loud. Best wishes for your city and of course, your chief. This is Charles Blackwell, Clerk Farage. I want the following public comment read on my behalf. Good evening, election fraudsters Mu Hassan and Mu Sadman will look good in a Wayne County jail jumpsuit. Ayman Islam, dear council members, after reviewing the findings of the recent investigation, which according to reports cost the city approximately $500,000, I urge you to make decisions that are the best of interest of Hamtramck and its residents. If terminating Max is part of the agenda, this could expose the city to significant financial liability through potential legal action. Ultimately, these costs would fall on the residents further burdening our community. Max has consistently acted in accordance with established procedures and has proven to be an integral qualified leader. I strongly encourage the city to act responsibly, listen to the voices of the community, and make the right decision.
Good evening, Ayman Islam.
Mark Coray, good evening. I wish to address the Miller Johnson report that has issued regarding the investigation of alleged malfeasance and misfeasance of several public officers. First, I wish to thank the Miller Johnson firm for their diligent efforts that has led to the findings reported in the media. The organizing principle of any municipality is public safety. The authority of every city over its citizens resides in its law enforcement functions. In the last 12 years, there has been palpable absence of leadership over the Hamtramck Police Department that has created an environment of permissiveness that has bordered an organizational anarchy. Several Hamtramck officers have been dismissed, resigned, and/or faced federal charges over their behavior. The city and its insurers have paid hundreds of thousands of dollars in lawsuit settlements due to alleged police misconduct. The disbandment of the Cobra Unit was one of the key remedial efforts directed at eradicating corruption and misconduct. In 2010, the NAACP has initiated an effort to establish a civilian police oversight board with the city of Hamtramck to give a seemingly helpless citizenry, well, with actual power to control the direction and operation of the city's police force. Several community leaders and myself have endorsed this effort to establish such a board. I have spoken at the city council meeting and before Hamtramck Community Initiative gathering to promote such efforts without any response from our elected leaders. During this 15-year period, the police department's failure to be led and operate properly has angered residents and resulted in the proliferation of civil rights lawsuits against the city. We, the public, believe the time has come to address the possibility and feasibility of creating a civilian police oversight board in Hamtramck. Please acknowledge this public's longstanding efforts in these regards and initiate meaningful dialogue towards proceeding and studying the efficacy, I think that's, I apologize, of such a board. This city has failed miserably and effective action needs to be taken to enable successful police leadership. May God help us all. Thank you. Mark Coray. Joseph Slenda, to whom it may concern, I have known Max for 20 years and he has dutifully served Hamtramck through all of its trials and tribulations and his changing time. I think it's shameful the way the city council and mayor have gone after him time and time again. I hope that you act fairly on this matter and do the right thing. Go after the criminals, not the whistleblowers. Sincerely, Joseph Slenda. Ellie Zoller, I take the time today to say this as a longtime resident and concerned citizen. I came here in 1985 from Poland to start a new life away from the corrupt communist government where citizens are under stricter laws with the governing body. The city of Hamtramck has become my home. I met my wife here, whose family are also lifelong residents. We have decided to raise our three children on the same block that I have lived in for 40 years, 40-plus years, being deeply rooted community, between being a business owner in the city as well as a homeowner. This lack of due process has me deeply concerned. We have certain city council members, a police chief, and possibly other government officials under criminal or federal investigations. Why are our elected officials not following due process? Let's not put the buggy in front of the horse. This is not how a democratic society is run. Let the investigations run their course and the U.S. judicial system hands out its verdict. A higher governing body whose role is to decide if it is guilt or innocence through the evaluation of the evidence. Once a conclusion is drawn, then it is time for this type of decision. We cannot possibly know the outcome of this case until it has concluded. Not following procedures leads us to the example of Baltimore, Maryland, where taxpayers were robbed over $13 million instead of being used for the community, instead of being used for the community, was paid out of restitution and did not add value to its community. We cannot heed into uncharted waters without a compass, otherwise we risk a great financial liability that we can't, we can avoid. Let's be clear, I am worried with Hamtramck, about Hamtramck, a known immigrant-led city. Hamtramck is a prime example of a gateway to the American dream, allowing many immigrants new opportunities. This is a clear route to a devastating economy and political mistake that has the potential of crippling our community with possible financial devastation in the future. Remember the citizens you represent and the tax dollars of, the tax dollars of, represent and the tax dollars they provide with their own blood, sweat, and tear. Do not show a lack of respect for the residents you promised to hear and represent. Show honor and respect to the community by making the right decision to stay on the right path for the positive, for the positive outcome. This is from Mohammed Al Jahim. Good evening, city clerks, city council members, mayor, and residents of Hamtramck. Bullet points, Hamtramck deserves fair elections, not forged ballots. Corruption has no place in our council or our police department. Trust is earned through honesty. Right now, Hamtramck needs both. Leaders should serve the people, not themselves. We need accountability and not cover-ups. It's time to move Hamtramck forward, Mr. Mayor. I respectfully request an answer. After these investigations and election fraud trials are resolved, will you commit to fulfilling the promise made to our community? For example, will the roads and bridges be rebuilt and properly maintained? And just as importantly, what is being done about the rising robberies in our city? Residents deserve to feel safe in their homes, businesses, and neighborhoods. Safety must be a top priority alongside rebuilding trust. It is time to turn words into action and to show the people of Hamtramck, whether in mosques, churches, or neighborhoods, that our leaders are serious about rebuilding trust and delivering results. And to the Hamtramck Police Press, Habib Al Jawafi, we hear you speak about Detroit police often, but what about the robberies happening here in Hamtramck? Our residents need you to focus on the safety of our own community first. Hamtramck comes first, remember that. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Tonight will be the first Hamtramck city council meeting since the release of a new report detailing allegations against the city's top cop.
Now, the findings come from an independent investigation launched months ago.
And the city reportedly paid hundreds of thousands of dollars to get to the bottom of a wide array of accusations against Chief Jamil Al Tahir. Now, all of this is coming after a memo from a city employee began circulating alleging the chief acted inappropriately on several occasions and may have broken the law.
7 News Detroit reporter Brittany Tulis is live at Hamtramck City Hall this morning with more on that report. And Brittany, people who live in the city have a lot to say about its findings.
Yeah, they do, Keenan and Alicia. Residents were pretty shocked to learn the accusations made against Hamtramck's police chief, questioning if he should still hold the title after that 60-page report substantiated some allegations, including encouraging the pointing of a firearm at someone's head. The independent investigation conducted by Miller Johnson Law Firm looked into allegations made against three Hamtramck employees, Chief Jamil Al Tahir, Officer David Adamsik, and City Manager Max Garberino. Now, here's just some of the allegations the law firm found to be true. Chief Al Tahir driving a city vehicle after drinking alcohol, pressuring officers to help in a custody dispute, and handing a loaded gun to a civilian volunteer and instructing them to put it to someone's head. Now to Officer Adamsik. Overtime abuse and violating policies regarding stolen property are some of the law firm substantiated findings on his allegations.
I would get fired if I worked like that at my job and did all these side deals and took people's safety, you know, lightly. I wouldn't have a job.
If somebody did all those things they're accused of, then they shouldn't be in charge of anybody.
Now, while the law firm largely did not substantiate initial allegations made against City Manager Max Garberino, they did say he exercised poor judgment in his role as city manager, like delaying addressing the chief and officer's misconduct allegations. Now, Garberino did say by phone Monday he would have taken action sooner, but was repeatedly told by the city's mayor he did not have the authority to.
Max was just doing his job. He was a whistleblower and he came out and did his job and he shouldn't have been suspended.
Now, all three employees are on administrative leave and Chief Al Tahir did address these findings, posting a statement to social media last night where he disputes those findings, but says he understands the seriousness of those concerns and will work with the city to address them. Now, Alicia and Keenan will also be following along to see how this situation is all addressed at tonight's city council meeting. Live from Hamtramck City Hall, I'm Brittany Tulis for 7 News Detroit this morning.
And of course, we'll be watching what goes on.
Okay. Is that Muad Najar?
Yes.
Three minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Salaam alaikum and hello, everybody. I don't have too much to say, honestly, to save the time for others to say their comments, but I'm here mainly as a former citizen of Hamtramck. You know, I support your mayor, I support you guys, and I knew you were going to take the right decision. There is no place for corruption in our city, so we need to fight corruptions in all ways and anyhow it comes to us, so that way no one take advantage of the resources of the community and the city, please. Thank you so much and that's all.
Thank you. Ahmed Shama, do you want to speak now or after? Okay, just making sure. Russ Gordon? Russ Gordon?
He's here.
Russ is here.
I don't know what to say. I kind of wish I'd, we'd have the, we'd be able to hear the results of the investigation before I spoke, but nonetheless, I'm, I just want to say I'm disgusted. The corruption in this town right now, in this council, is like nothing I've seen in the 30 years I've been here. And in the past, there've been, there's been dissension, there's people who disagreed with one another, but nothing like this. The vote harvesting, the election fraud, council people who live in the suburbs and driving into council to make decisions for people that they feel are too good to live with, it's disgusting. And to top it all off, you take a man like Max Garberino who gave his, he's done more in the time that he was here than any other city manager I've seen since I've been in town in 30 years. I'm just disgusted with the whole lot of you, okay? That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Russ. Bill Meyer?
Hello, Council Mayor, Bill Meyer, former executive director, one in Hamtramck. So it's a busy agenda and you have a lot of important decisions to make. You can tell by how much media is here, so that's, that's the yardstick. How many media shows up, that's how important the meeting is. So I just got to address two issues on the agenda. One is the Miller Johnson 59-page report that came out. Thank them, thank them for their work. Try to come to a resolution. I think we all felt that was a fair agency to deal with, that they were unbiased. Now, what they said is based on fact. So I hope you make the right decision after that. I just want to let you know that my personal feelings about someone like Max Garberino, everybody has problems and everybody does some things wrong. But Max, to me, has always been a great city manager. He's been committed to the people of the city and he just made some mistakes, like getting involved with certain people that he shouldn't have gotten involved with, but that doesn't make him a bad person. I know he's a humane, positive, loving person who wants to bring the city together and he wants to serve the city. I also want to say that this report, Miller Johnson report overlooks a lot of important factors of living here in Hamtramck. First of all, this is a very diverse city and many references were made in the 59-page report that overlooked or didn't mention the reason why they didn't want Al Tahir to come here as the police chief. But the fact that he's Yemeni Arab and up till now, we've never had anybody except white police chiefs, and I think racism has a big factor to do with a lot of activity that's going on in the city. And Max is aware of that, Max knows about that, and we're all trying to fight that. We're all trying to find a way so we all can work together. But racism plays a big factor in what we're doing here and decisions we make and attitudes we have about certain people. I mean, if someone's cheating, ballot harvesting, you can still find that person to be a human person. He's a human being that might be doing something wrong. If you can talk to him and find out why are you doing this, why are you being unethical and trying to take advantage of power in the city, it would be better than just disgracing the person and throwing them away. We're all human beings and we have to find a way to work together. That's the bottom line.
Okay, Diane Furkan?
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I am deeply concerned with the direction. I'm deeply concerned with the direction our city has, has been heading and the impact it is having in our community. I am outraged by a recent report and evidence showing that our police chief drove under the influence of alcohol, endangering not only the public, but also the officers who were passengers in the vehicle. That incident could have caused serious harm or even loss of life. What message does it sound about our police department when officers did not intervene and allow their chief to drive intoxicated? Such actions are not only unacceptable, but disgraceful, and they undermine the very integrity of our public safety system. Our police department should stand as a symbol of professionalism, accountability, and public trust. Yet when a few officers fail to uphold their duty in such a critical moment, how can we as residents trust them to protect and serve responsibility? In addition, we currently have two council members who were charged with election violations, including voter fraud and ballot harvesting. Despite these serious charges, they remain on council, voting on decisions that affect our community. This disrespects the very office they hold. They should resign or be removed from their positions. Furthermore, through recent revelations, including Council Member Musa caught on video in connection with ballot harvesting and with his residency in question, raised further doubts about integrity of those representing us. These actions are not befitting of a council member, and Mr. Musa, you should withdraw from the primary election. Yet, instead of addressing these serious incidents, the council has chosen to turn its focus on retaliating against our city manager, Max Garberino. Mr. Garberino fulfilled his duty by placing the police chief on administrative leave and investigating the misconduct within the department. He has consistently assisted residents with code enforcement issues and has worked to improve our community. Punishing him for taking inappropriate action is unjust and appears motivated by personal agendas rather than the best interest of the city because he didn't act sooner. I'm asking this council to do the right thing. Remove the police chief, hold accountable the council members that have violated our public trust, disqualify individuals whose actions in residency status are in question, reinstate Mr. Garberino, who has acted in good faith and has served our community. Our city is struggling. Our reputation is damaged. The whole world is watching. As residents of Hamtramck, we deserve a leadership that upholds the law, restores trust, and acts with integrity. Hamtramck deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you. Abdul Hamza?
Abdul, Abdul.
At the end? Okay. No problem. Kathy Gordon?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Kathy Gordon. I'm a former councilwoman. You know, it kind of breaks my heart to see what's going on here. Mayor Ghalib, I shake my head every time I look at you. I think your heart is in Kuwait, not in Hamtramck. I'm sorry. Every decision you have made, from the time this whole theastro started, violated charter, where in the hell is a city attorney in all this? Do you read the charter at all? Does anybody read the charter? I know the council doesn't because they don't even read their packets. Now, I'm going to educate you a little bit. Chapter 7, 703 of the Charter says, and I quote, "The council and each of its members and all elected officials shall deal with administrative branch solely through the city manager." Got that? You can't go around telling people what to do or hiring people, your friends. You go through the city manager, whether that be, and I quote, "not through any orders or directions, written or verbal, public or privately." Now, I'm going to go on. Section 1002, "City managers shall appoint a chief." Not you guys, all you two is approve the contract. You have no say-so on who sits in that seat.
Finish the sentence. Subject to approval by Mayor Council.
The contract, only the contract. That's all you approve. I suggest you read the charter.
I did.
I don't think so. Then you need an interpreter to explain it to you.
No, I understand.
Now, you think you do. I told you, your hearts and your heart and brain are in play.
Just finish your comment and go ahead.
And the chief is subject only to the supervision of the city manager. After all this happened, I'm going to read you section 616F. Each employee must be protected against retaliation for lawful disclosure which he or she believes evidences a violation of any law, rule, or regulation, or abuse of authority. Tell me you did not retaliate and put Max Garberino on leave for that reason. Don't tell me that. And I honestly don't believe that. And again, I'm going to ask where the city attorney was in all of this. I mean, do you not advise them that they're violating charter when they make these decisions?
Ms. Gordon, please address the mayor.
Does he not? I don't understand. I am very disgusted. It breaks my heart to see what's happening in this city. I was born and raised here. I sat in one of those seats. You ought to be ashamed of yourself, all of you.
Michael Petrack? Mike Petrack?
Mike Petrack?
Thank you, Kathy, thank you.
I know it's a lot out there. Are you here?
Mike Petrack? He's coming.
Okay.
Hello? So yeah, it's been a rough week. In ancient China, there was a concept called the mandate of heaven, which was the right to rule based on virtue and ability to govern justly. When the emperor didn't have the mandate of heaven, certain things started happening. Social unrest, flooding. These were signs. I think we're seeing a lot of that stuff go on here today. The ballot harvesting that went on in 2023 and the resulting arrests and hopefully convictions are born. are born. Councilman Musa getting caught red-handed on the camera was pretty great, too. As far as I'm concerned, this council doesn't have enough legitimate members to make a quorum right now. You would be doing the city a favor if you stepped down. You're about to make a decision tonight that could cost every single taxpayer in this city thousands of dollars. Do not make that decision lightly. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
To correction, there was no guest.
All right, thank you. Jamal?
Jamal.
Jamal.
So I'm going to give the summary. The main of the matter to me is, as a taxpayer here, I came today to ask the council and especially the mayor to take their time to study the report and study it deep to take the right action to correct the misconduct we've heard from the three employees. I have read the conclusion and the report, they said the city, they have the right to terminate their contracts. But from my experience and what happened in the Hamtramck district, I think now three years sober it ended, she get paid. And this ethic is corruption when we keep wasting that tax money, that taxpayer money as this way is corruption in different way. And I want to remind the other way that broke our trust in them, that they use reason to hire this company. And I believe the money or the fees more than half a million dollars. So put this in your attention and take the right decision, please.
Thank you. Is it Mohammed Al Amali? Mohammed Al Amali?
Al Amali.
I think that's what it looks like. Al Amal? Al Umal?
Someone read it. Someone read it.
It's definitely Mohammed.
Lots of Os, lots of As. I think there's an I in there. An L. I think it's an Amali. It is a, that is a last name here. Yeah. Joan Bitner? Joan Bitner?
Joan Bitner.
Joan Bitner.
Yes or no?
I think Joan's coming, but I don't know.
Okay, that's fine.
Hi, my name is Joan Bitner, and I live in the city for 51 years. I've owned a business here 52 years. And I have to say, you all, I have people calling me from all over the United States. Oh, I saw your, I saw you on your city on this, on the TV. And not in a good light. It's embarrassing. You all need to behave and conduct yourselves in a much more professional manner. And for the city manager, we have, every time we have a problem, we will call Max. And he didn't just listen, he did something. It always got resolved. He's been a very, very good manager, one of the best I've had since I've been here. And I've been here since before, of course, we ever had managers. So I think that part of the problem could have been solved if we would have let him do his job from the beginning and hire the police chief. So you all decided to not listen to him then, and I believe now that it's coming back to bite us. So I would appreciate it if you all would resolve your problems and make the city a better place. My life is depending on it, right? Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Sophie Kuziah?
Now to Hamtramck, where all eyes are on tonight's city council meeting that's expected to get underway in just under an hour. We are waiting to see if the findings of a 59-page report that leaked online yesterday will be shared with the public. It alleges misconduct from city officials, including the chief of police. Some of the accusations are pressuring officers to help in a custody dispute, also handing a loaded gun to a civilian volunteer and instructing them to put it to someone's head. Seven News Detroit reporter Faraz Javed is digging into the potential fallout from that report.
How would you describe this report?
Detailed.
Former Wayne County Prosecutor Todd Flood was impressed by the thoroughness of the investigation conducted by Miller Johnson, a law firm hired by the city.
They give corroborating evidence to the extent that they can?
Driving a city vehicle after drinking alcohol, pressuring officers to help in a custody dispute, handing a loaded gun to a civilian volunteer, and instructing the individual to put it on someone's head, and reducing another officer's discipline in exchange for the destruction of evidence. Those are just a few of the allegations that the report claims to be true against Hamtramck Police Chief Jamil Al-Tahiri.
I would imagine the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office is going to take a deep dive into these things.
Representing Al-Tahiri, Attorney Amir Macklet alleges that leaking the confidential report on the city's website was a political move and that it prevents his client from due process.
The chief tried to raise some issues to the city manager about a police officer named David Adamchak. He was placed on administrative leave.
The report found Adamchak abused over time, violated stolen property policies, and recorded other officers. While most allegations against city manager Max Garberino weren't substantiated, the report shows poor judgment, such as delaying action on misconduct claims against Al-Tahiri and Adamchak. Attorney John Marco, representing both Garberino and Adamchak, argues the report is incomplete.
When we get in a litigation and we actually start putting people under oath, taking depositions, the reports do not hold up.
While the three individuals are currently on administrative leave, former prosecutor Flood believes the report may also question the police department's integrity.
This has opened up Pandora's Box to look into this department. And I can imagine all of the people that have been convicted of crimes potentially are going to look into who investigated the case and was the chief involved or one of his, you know, colleagues? And did they put the finger on the scale and tip it one way or the other?
And I'm still hearing mixed feelings about this report. Some people here in Hamtramck say that Al-Tahiri will be reinstated. Others say not a chance. The meeting is tonight at 7:00, and we have updates for you both on air and online. In Hamtramck, I'm Faraz Javed, 7 News Detroit.
Thank you. And now we move to the new business, and we have the first item. We move the Johnson-Miller internal investigation report.
Well, we said discussion.
No, so it is a discussion. So basically, here's the discussion.
But we need a motion.
No, no, hold on. So here's the discussion is that they're not going to be presenting what our conversation was, has attorney-client privilege. And basically, they're going to stand by the report, which we're going to re-release again for people to, if they need to read it. But in the meantime, what we're going to do is we're going to suspend the law and we're going to add a new, we're going to do a motion to add a resolution.
So, Councilman?
Are we going to remove A, though, if we're not doing it?
Yes, so that's part of, so part of this motion should be to remove A and replace it with the resolution that Councilman's.
Okay, so that's going to be two different motions.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
So somebody, can I motion to remove A from new business?
Second.
And all in favor of that?
Oh, actually, I apologize, but we have to motion to suspend the law, which we probably didn't.
I said.
So we got a motion to suspend the law.
I have to make a motion to suspend the law.
So I will do that as a motion to suspend the law, which is, colleague, Mr. Hassan, to, do one moment. Suspend law to amend the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then I need now, if you want to do the motion, please.
I want a motion to remove A to Johnson's for new business.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I hear there's another resolution, another amendment?
Yes. So, you know, after a long discussion about the report upstairs, and based on the discussion, based on the outcomes of the report, the investigation report, Councilman Sumari would like to motion the first resolution based on that discussion, mainly just on the outcome of the report.
Go ahead, Councilman Sumari.
Yeah, I'd like the motion to terminate city manager Max Garberino and with the report, Miller Johnson. Second.
I'm sorry.
Based on the Miller Johnson report?
He wants to eliminate?
He wants to terminate Max Garberino.
Terminate, okay. I didn't hear the word.
So the motion is to terminate Max Garberino as city manager based on the Miller Johnson report?
Yes.
Everyone else, please turn your cell phones off. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And so there was, there's also, Mr. Mayor, if you want to mention what you're putting on.
Yeah, so that's the first resolution. And then the second resolution will be, we will direct the city manager, our acting city manager, to consulting with the attorney to take action against the other two individuals that were involved in the investigation report, based mainly on the outcomes of the report.
So also, you're asking the city manager to terminate?
That's not a motion, this is not a motion. They're just asking us, they're not asking us to terminate, they never say that.
Yeah, because, I'm sorry, because it's the city council's duty to take actions against Max, but they cannot overstep their power and take action against the department head or an officer. Therefore, it will be shifted to the city, acting city manager, after consulting with the attorney to take action regarding those two individuals.
Based on the Miller Johnson report?
Yes.
So not another, this is just a recommendation?
That's not a recommendation, he can just say that.
Okay.
But I think everybody would like to hear from you, because, I mean, we would leave no speculation. I think everyone is waiting to hear your decision if you have already.
I understand. Based on, so we, the city manager and I discussed this matter with Miller Johnson, with our insurance attorney, and we've come to the undeniable conclusion, unfortunately, based on the evidence presented and the conclusions found, that we have to terminate the chief of police, Jamil Al-Tahiri. And we will also be taking action regarding Officer Adamchak, but he is, based on the Miller Johnson report as well. However, with his situation, we have to follow the terms of his contract with the CBA. So, but both will end up terminated.
So that needs no vote, actually. I mean, I think with that, that's the main, well, the pressing issue for tonight's meeting, and we can proceed with our meeting. The next item in the new business is Resolution 2025-103, approving side.
We begin tonight with all eyes on the Hamtramck City Council in their first meeting since a bombshell report was leaked. Welcome to 7 News Detroit at 11:00. I'm Carolyn Clifford.
And I'm Mike Duffy. Thank you for joining us. And we first brought you the 59-page report on Monday when it was posted online. It alleges misconduct from city officials, including the chief of police.
The chief accused of pressuring officers to help in a custody dispute and handing a loaded gun to a civilian volunteer and instructing them to put it to someone's head.
Many concerned neighbors turning up to tonight's city council meeting. 7 News Detroit reporter Brett Cast was there following the fallout.
Yeah, Mike, there was a lot of fallout indeed tonight. After more than an hour of closed session, the city council came out and announced they would be terminating city manager Max Garberino. They also said that the acting city manager will be terminating the city's police chief, Jamil Al-Tahiri, and also terminating an officer who was a subject in this report. Now, the city manager Garberino was actually in attendance there tonight, watching this all unfold. And it all started back in May when Garberino had placed the police chief and the officer on administrative leave after troubling allegations came to light. Then maybe a week or so later, the city council came out and put Garberino on leave for putting the chief on leave, basically. And many of the claims against the police chief were substantiated in that report that was released yesterday, including that he wiped his city phone. And it also found that the chief drove a police vehicle to a strip club while drunk, using his police lights to run numerous red lights in the process. However, many claims against the city manager were not substantiated, but the report said his main wrongdoing, if anything, was that he didn't put the police chief on leave sooner. Now, we talked to the mayor about that. We also talked to the attorneys for all involved.
City council thought that the word significant poor judgment means that he knew in January about these allegations, that's what the report said, and did nothing, not even a verbal warning or written warning to either the chief or me. So there was, he did not take actions to put a limit to this until it escalated beyond control.
This council doesn't understand the concept of retaliatory claims, whistleblower violations, and has opened themselves up to a long litigation process. This is going to cost the residents thousands of dollars, each individual.
It's shocking, and it's clear retaliation, and it's a big mistake, and the people of Hamtramck are going to be the ones who are punished for this.
And much of the public comment, or some of the public comment, I should say, were people speaking in support of the city manager. Now to be clear, city council, the only action they could take was terminating the city manager. It is now the acting city manager who will be terminating the other two involved. However, the officer still has to go through a process with the union before he can be terminated. And the lawyers for all involved say they will continue to pursue legal action against the city. Live in Hamtramck on broadcast, 7 News Detroit.
We'll start with the mayor report. I know it's too late for you guys. Thanks for coming and for waiting all this time. I mean, we had to take some tough decisions today based on the recommendation of the investigation company. Not that we wanted to terminate anybody, but it seems like the only solution at this time, or the safest one. I want to mention that for our activities for the past two weeks, I went to Washington, DC, and I was at the White House last week, had some important meetings with some senior officials in the White House, and with the Homeland Security Advisor of President Trump, with Deputy Chief of Staff, and with Secretary of State, Marco Rubio. It was, I think it was a productive meeting. It was productive meetings. We discussed some issues, some issues that concerns our community. And I don't want to go into details at this time until everything is confirmed, but we asked for a lot of resources for Hamtramck. If it gets approved, we see some positive signs, it's going to solve some chronic issues for the city that we have been suffering for the past decade. So I'm hoping and praying that we will hear some good news. And if it gets approved, they were very cooperative, very receptive. I listed them at the moment, and then I sent a confirmation email with the list of our needs for the city. And I'm hoping that it gets approved. If it does, then we will solve some serious issues, financial and infrastructure and public safety issues. I'm hoping, I don't want to announce exactly what they are until I get the confirmation that it's approved. So if it does, I would consider this visit the most productive visit in the history of Hamtramck. And I would be happy to accomplish something for the community before I leave.
Can you pay for your own trip?
I paid, I paid for my own trip, of course. So those, you know, social media people don't accuse me of anything. I'm working for the city, but I paid for my own trip. And I hope that I can put something for the community. I don't want, yeah, that would make me happy if something happens. So that and, you know, time, it's too late for now, I don't want to take any more. I don't want to take any more time. We will move to them, report with the mayor, put them, please. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say, you know, thank you for everybody that showed up here tonight. You guys have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any council member report?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Hassan, go ahead.
Kelsey Gordon, even though, even her little agree disagreement, but she was my mentor. She educated me about the council law and all those things. But I like her, what she said. And it's good for us. Your mind is queer, your body is here. At least, at least the good thing, it's progressive. And no matter what, you make us proud. I don't care who said what. Now, inside the White House, Marco Rubio and you, there is not too many people, not too many president in the world can have a seat inside the White House and discussion about two mile square Hamtramck City.
Right, thank you.
And I want to let the, in the world, everybody was reporting corruption, corruption, corruption in Hamtramck City. And of course, election things, people has a mistake, no matter what. But until they prove guilty from the justice, they are not guilty. The other hand, media flashing everything about the corruption. So after John Miller report, they did not blame anybody of this side of this area. That means elected official. There has, all the report came for the Hamtramck city who working for Hamtramck, either department head or the detective or others. So media, please, corruption, nothing to do us. You can blame the election thing us, no problem. But it's not the corruption. Corruption is them, not us. It is proven. So please, when you report, report, requesting you guys report correctly. Corruption, corruption belongs to them, not us, not us. So I want to let, in our community, in the world, who are abusing, telling bad thing about us and bringing our religious there, I don't accept it. Please blame to me, don't blame to the Muslim. The other day, when we suspend our respectfully, administratively, when he go out there at the corner, what he say about them Muslim councilmen, then from one guy from Dearborn, he record it. He said, I will come testify that. Please, don't bring the racism here. Okay? This is the time demographic, population, power changing. German to Polish, Polish to whoever majority people here is the, is they are getting. But don't think they are not educated. Don't think they cannot handle it. Okay? So respectfully, everybody, I'm the councilman for Hamtramck. I treat everybody same respectful manner. And I wish everybody, also guys who criticize about us, at least first find out before you say something, somebody say they get arrested, they already guarded, they will be the, they already one county jail. Please defamation, what? You have to understand who's saying what. It could be go against you soon. And again, we are not that kinds of person. We want a peaceful life around here, keep it here. And we are, like Bill Meyer said, one Hamtramck, we are one family. Mr. Bill Meyer, I add one more word. One Hamtramck, one family. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And just wanted to know about what you mentioned. I had my meeting with Secretary Rubio in Elon Musk's office and it's empty now. So I'll ask the president next time to give it to him. But that's a good point. If my body and soul wasn't here, I wouldn't be asking stuff for the city. So that proves that, you know, my body and soul is still here in the city and for the city. That's why I care about this community. Until the last day, I will stay here.
Maybe you dream when you sleep, we have, that's all.
Thank you. So any, any other reports? All right, thanks so much. We move back to the second round of public comments.
Mr. Bill Meyer.
Okay, thank you very much for dealing with some tough issues. I'm sure there'll be repercussions, one or the other. Lawyers come off of the walls pretty soon. Oh, hey, there we go. So thank you for the tough word decision you had to make decisions. I'm not sure I agree with everything, but that doesn't matter. What matters is that you're trying to do a job and you're here at the office and you're working and trying to work for the city. You represent everybody in the city. We all know that. And I just hope you saw a little bit of a remembrance of what city life used to be in council meetings tonight. You saw a few people from the past and there used to be a lot of hate in the city. And that's being eliminated by the level-headedness that you people are trying to bring to the city. I'm not saying you're not committing crime or whatever. I'm not talking about that at all. I'm saying as far as, as far as not hating people, as not as far as not creating negativity in the room, this is very important for people who work together. They have to trust each other. And I appreciate what you've done. Whether anybody agrees with what you did or not, let's keep saying, let's work together, find a way out of this. And hopefully, this will solve the problem and go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Imad Shamad still here?
No.
No? Okay, that's all for public comment. Adjourn.
Sorry.
Councilor Baye motion?
Yeah, I motion.
Oh, you motion, who's advocate? Okay.
I will come up and read. I was scared about the motion.
No, I've never.
Well, good morning, guys. And it was largely based on a 59-page report from an independent investigation. Certainly, it was a major and very massive move, but it won't be the end of this issue, not by a long shot. Hamtramck City Council voted unanimously last night to fire city manager Max Garberino due to his delayed response to police misconduct allegations. While city council doesn't have the authority to fire chief Jamil Al Tahir and officer David Adamcheck, the acting city manager can and will likely do so soon. This comes after Detroit-based law firm Miller Johnson released a 59-page report following their independent third-party investigation. According to the report, chief Al Tahir drove a police car to and from a strip club while drunk. The report also alleges that Al Tahir destroyed evidence, used sirens to run red lights, handed a loaded gun to a civilian volunteer with instructions to put it to someone's head and pressured officers to falsify police reports and 911 calls to help in a custody dispute in exchange for another officer's reduction of discipline. As for officer David Adamcheck, the Miller Johnson report found that Adamcheck abused overtime, violated stolen property policies and recorded other officers. The attorneys for all three city officials voiced displeasure for the decision.
I think it's unfortunate that they depended on this, this one-sided and unsubstantiated report. A report in and of itself is not an indictment. It's something that has to be challenged.
Without to throw his entire career away as if he means nothing, as if he hasn't meant anything to his citizens without proper channels and the process of law. It's shocking and it's clear retaliation.
On the flip side, Hamtramck Mayor Amir Halib defended the decision to remove all three officials.
You know, as a public figure, I try my best to be a role model for others, to hold myself to high ethical standards. And, and I expect every other public figure to do the same.
All right, back out here live now. Officer Adamcheck, by the way, still has to go through the process of the, with the police union to officially be fired. But eventually, all three of those city officials will be eventually terminated. The attorneys of all three of those officials, they vowed to fight this in court and pursue litigation against the city. We're here just outside of Hamtramck City Hall. I'm Ryan Marshall for 7 News Detroit this morning.
All right, thank you so much, Ryan. Certainly, a lot of.